I'd like to welcome everyone to the January 7, 2008, Salina City Commission meeting. Will a clerk please call a roll?
Mayor Jelka.
Here.
Commissioner Larson.
Here.
Commissioner Peck.
Here.
Commissioner Purney.
Here.
Commissioner Vanir.
Here. I'd like to invite everyone to join us in the pledge of allegiance in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which sustains, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The first item on today's agenda is the citizens' forum. Time set aside for any citizens who would like to address the commission on an item that is not on the day's official agenda. Is there anyone here that wishes to come forward for that purpose?
Good afternoon. Michael Spicer, 2515 Argon Drive. But I am here today as the executive director of Salina Community Theater. At the December 17, 2007, meeting, this body approved a vital step in the future of Salina Community Theater. A step that will not only allow us the opportunity to continue to be the organization that provides great theater and quality of life in Salina, as it has for the last 50 years, but also to grow into the organization that the future of this city deserves. However, at that meeting, there was an agenda item following this vote, and the anticipated length of that discussion precluded any comments from me regarding the commission's vote. On behalf of the board, the volunteers, and the staff of Salina Community Theater, I would like to thank this commission for giving SCT the support to bring our future to fruition. Just as importantly, I would like to thank Jason Gage, Greg Bengston, Steve Snyder, the city manager's office, and indeed, all the staff members who have, through their positive actions, facilitated in bringing this project to this exciting moment. Thank you all very much.
Mr. Spicer? Any additional citizens here for the citizens' forum? Seeing none, we will continue on to awards and proclamations.
Item 4.1, "The Day of January 20, 2008, as Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Day in the City of Salina," Lisa Upshaw will read the proclamation.
Is Ms. Upshaw here at the moment? Apparently not. We'll hold that in case.
Item 4.2, "The Month of January 2008 as Mentoring Month in the City of Salina," Julie Gotts, executive director of the Big Brothers and Big Sisters, will read the proclamation.
I think that's pronounced "Gotts."
I have a couple of littles with me from the waiting list, Aishwarya and Neosha, who are here. I also have some matches. If you kind of want to just raise your hand so they can see who you are. And then Jessica Allen, our program director, is here with us as well to help represent the agency. And I am here with the proclamation as kind of a kickoff to our celebration of 40 years of service to youth here in Saline County, which is something that we're very proud of as well. Whereas everyone remembers someone special, a neighbor, teacher, relative, or friend, who broaden our horizons and brought a little magic into our lives, one way to return the favor is to mentor a child. Whereas every adult has something to offer, a few hours a couple times a month can make a big difference in a child's life. A mentor does not have to change his or her life to change a child's. Whereas research has shown that children engaged in the one-to-one professionally-supported mentoring programs of Big Brothers, Big Sisters are more likely to finish high school and less likely to begin using drugs and alcohol, skip school, or be involved in violence. Whereas in Salina, Kansas, there are many young people, especially boys and children whose parents are incarcerated, who want and would benefit from having a mentor. Whereas January has been designated as National Mentoring Month, calling on adults across America to get involved with mentoring programs. Now, therefore, be resolved that Alan Jelka, Salina mayor, does hereby proclaim January 2008 as Mentoring Month in this Salina, Kansas, and encourage all citizens, businesses, public and private agencies, religious and educational institutions, to support mentoring and give young people in our community the gift of time and friendship through Big Brothers, Big Sisters of Salina, a youth mentoring program in our community.
Are there some special events that you wanted to draw attention to?
We do have a couple of things coming up to help bring attention to National Mentoring Month. Some of them are still in the works, but one of the things we're hoping to do is partner with the Salina Fire Department to do biggs for a day with the firefighters, with boys on our waiting list. The boys will go to the firehouse, and part of those activities will include getting a tour of the station, in addition to getting some education about fire safety, positive character traits, and also maybe the firefighters will be able to prepare a meal for the kids. And then January 24 is National Thank Your Mentor Day. So we're working with a local restaurant here in town where matches will go and get a tour of the restaurant and the kitchen, and the kids will actually serve a meal to their biggs as a thank you for their service. And we are planning to contact the media and get some exposure for that specific day on January 24. So those are a couple of things.
I certainly want to thank you for coming and hope many in the community will respond to your call for new volunteers. And I have a copy of your signed proclamation here. No. Okay. Couple of weeks out from Martin Luther King Day, so we'll hold that one until next week. We have no public hearings today, so we will continue on with the consent agenda.
Item 6.1, "Approve the minutes of December 17, 2007. Item 6.2, approve the minutes of December 20, 2007. Item 6.3, approval of the 2008 Special Parks and Recreation Fund Capital Improvement Program."
I have a couple corrections on the minutes I wanted to offer as amendments. One is during the discussion of the golf issue, the gentleman that spoke was John Schwartzman, not Gary Schwartzman. And also, toward the bottom of page four, I had a statement on the coals issue that I wanted better summarized, and I'd like it to read that Mayor Jelka commented on the comparison that was made at the last meeting regarding comparison with city revitalization rebates because the city of Salina has never used a sales tax initiative to fund economic development. I wanted to more accurately reflect what I was saying. Entertaining a motion on the consent agenda.
Mayor, I'd move for approval of the consent agenda.
Second. Motion to approve the consent agenda with the said amendments on the December 17 meeting. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That passes five to zero. We will continue on with development and business.
Item 7.1, "Acceptance of Offered Easement Right-of-Way and Restricted Access Dedications in the Replat of the Bergcamp subdivision."
Mr. Andrew.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, commissioners, the location of this particular application is the south side of Schilling Road, just west of the Union Pacific Railroad tracks. There was a plat approved as a county plat in 1992 under our inter-local agreement with between the city and county, which gives the city concurrent review and approval authority over plats within one mile. This was platted and zoned at the time to allow construction of a manufacturing facility for Bergcamp Incorporated. And in 1993, the city commission also approved an outside-the-city water and sewer agreement for this property. About 1996, or into 1997, Schilling Road was rebuilt and paved in this location. Prior to that, it was an unimproved gravel road. This is currently a one-lot plat, and the proposal is to convert it to a multi-lot, multi-use development. And the replat, as it's proposed, would create five lots, and all of them would have access from an internal new public street. There's currently a driveway today that comes south from Schilling Road. The applicants are proposing to convert that to a public street, Bergcamp Drive, which would terminate in a cul-de-sac. Access to all those lots would be from that street, except up in this location here. This particular lot would have its only frontage and potential access from Schilling Road. As a result, the applicant is requesting a break in access control for that Lot 4. There's also an access opening there for a city pump station that's next to the railroad tracks. Again, Bergcamp Drive would be a public street and could be publicly financed through a benefit district. As far as the improvements to serve this property, the applicant's engineer is proposing to extend an eight-inch water line south along Bergcamp Drive and then along the west side of Lot 2 and tie it back. It would be to bring a water line here, wrap it around, and bring it back and tie it down into an existing line in the south industrial area. This would be a public water line, would provide a loop connection and two sources of flow. There has been an eight-inch sewer line that runs from Schilling Road south and serves the manufacturing facility. To date, this has been a private line, but city crews have examined that line and determined that it was constructed to city standards and is of the dimensions that it could be accepted for city maintenance. And the final improvement is this property has historically had a pond, but nowhere to send the water, so it has a double-sized pond, and water has actually been retained on the site. But under an annexation agreement in 2006, this is the ability to construct a force main and take the water out of the pond and send it under the railroad tracks and over to the Schilling Road ditch. So that will be their plan for discharging the pond. The particular dedications that the applicants requesting the city to accept are right-of-way for Bergcamp Drive, internal public utility and drainage easements. This down at the south end would be a public drainage easement for the detention pond. And then they're proposing to dedicate restricted access along Schilling Road, again requesting an access break for Lot 4 and for the pump station. There's also, in this location here, a high-pressure gas line that comes across the property, and there's a 66-foot wide easement for that. That is also reflected on the plat. Planning Commission considered this proposed replat at their December 18 meeting and voted to approve the replat, subject to certain technical corrections being made to the drawing. Those have all been worked out with the applicant's design engineer, and they also recommended two conditions of approval, and we're currently working on acceptable maintenance covenants for the pond. But if you're in agreement with the action of the planning commission, a motion should be made to accept the offered easement right-of-way and restricted access dedications and authorize the mayor to sign the plat. With that, I'd be happy to address any questions. I believe the applicant's representative is here also.
Questions of staff report? Seeing none, I'd entertain any comment from the applicant. Although you're not a stranger, we'll still need your name and address.
My name is Donnie Mars, 2035 East Iron. I represent DMA Architects and the Melvin Bergcamp Trust. Be happy to answer any questions that you might have. We have accomplished everything that we were trying to accomplish here with the planning commission's action, and would appreciate your concurrence.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Entertain any public comment on the proposed right-of-way dedications, if there is any? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the commission.
Mayor, I move that we accept the offered easement right-of-way and restricted access dedications and authorize you to sign the Bergcamp replat.
Motion is to approve the offered easement right-of-way and restricted access dedications and replat of the Bergcamp subdivision. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That passes five to zero.
Item 7.2, "Application Number Z0722, Requesting a Change in Zoning District Classification from I-1 and I-2 to C-5 on Property Address as 500 through 510 East Schilling Road."
Mr. Andrew.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, commissioners, this is a companion item to the item that you just reviewed, and as part of that replat, the plan was to create two outlots on Schilling Road. One of them is occupied by an existing building, occupied by Motion Industries. As we noted, this property was originally platted in 1992, and then in 1996, there was a plan to install Motion Industries on the site as a tenant, and it was determined at the time that they did not qualify for the exception to having city utilities without annexation, as they were not a basic industrial use. So the north 250 feet of this property was annexed into the city. In 2006, the remainder of the property was annexed into the city. Now, the request is to take these two outlets, which are combined I-1 and I-2 zoning today, and to rezone those to C-5 Service Commercial to allow commercial development of the vacant site, which is identified as Lot 4. As we noted, this property has been platted before, but not in a way that's conducive to commercial development of the property. C-5 zoning is our Service Commercial District and allows almost any commercial retail or office use. C-5 zoning would actually be downzoning from what the property is today, would be less intensive and more restrictive than industrial zoning. While the site is not unsuitable for warehousing or light industrial development, it's also suitable for offices or service-type businesses that would fit C-5 classification and also serve as a buffer or transition use between the residential subdivisions north of Schilling and the south industrial area. The applicant thinks that these lots are more conducive to C-5 type uses. The idea that's been in place out on Schilling Road is that was to encourage development on the south side that serves as a transition or buffer between housing to the north and industrial to the south. You can barely see it, but the bland subdivision, which is here, these lots along Schilling are zone C-5. There's a farmhouse here that's currently agricultural, but will someday be rezoned and redeveloped. And then the frontage along Liberty Edition is planned C-5. So the C-5 zoning here would be consistent with the zoning pattern on the south side of Schilling Road. This also was reviewed by the planning commission at their December 18 hearing, and they voted to recommend approval of the rezoning request, citing the four reasons that they identified on page five of your report. But basically, they looked at this and said, you've got C-5 zoning on the west and east. C-5 zoning would be compatible with that pattern. If you concur with that recommendation, then the attached ordinance, rezoning the two outlots along Schilling Road, should be approved on first reading. I think the city clerk did bring to your attention that we borrowed a number from a previously-used ordinance, so the correct ordinance number on this should be 34 and not 30. So it should be 080434 and not 30 as on the printed version that you have. With that, I'd be happy to address any questions, and the applicant's representative is here for this case as well.
Questions of Mr. Andrew? Seeing none, I'd invite any public comment, if there is any.
Donnie Mars, 2035 East Iron, DMA Architects, representing the Melvin Bergcamp Trust. Again, planning commission, we were able to accomplish what we were trying to accomplish, and we appreciate your concurrence with their opinion of what this ordinance is about. Thank you.
Additional public comment? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the commission.
Mayor, the applicant and the planning commission and staff having dealt with this more than adequately, I'd say I move that we adopt ordinance number 0810434, rezoning lots 4 and 5 Block 1 and the replat of the Bergcamp subdivision to C-5 Service Commercial District.
Second. Motion is to approve ordinance 08-10434, rezoning property at 50510 East Schilling Road from I-1 Industrial Park to, and I-2 Light Industrial to C-5 Service Commercial. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That passes five to zero. We will continue on with items of administration.
Item 8.1, "Second Reading Ordinance Number 0710429, Providing a Change in Zoning District Classification from I-2 to PDD to Allow a Warehouse Building to Be Converted Into Mixed-Use Live Workspace on Property Address as 510 through 514 North Santa Fe."
This passed on first reading December 17, and we've had no additional comments. I'd entertain any others, if there are any. Seeing none, we'll ask for commission action.
Mayor, I'd move for adoption of ordinance 0710429 on second reading.
Second. Motion is to approve ordinance 07-10429, providing for a change in zoning district, classification from I-2 to PDD on property at 510 and 514 North Santa Fe. Will a clerk please call a roll?
Commissioner Larson.
Aye.
Commissioner Peck.
Aye.
Commissioner Purney.
Aye.
Commissioner Vanir.
Aye.
Mayor Jelka.
Aye.
Item 8.2, "Second Reading Ordinance Number 0710430, Admitting Chapter 8, Article 1, Division 1 of the Salina Code by Adding Sections 8-15.1 and 18-15.2 that Provides for Local Amendments to the International Building Code Sections 1607.11.1 and 1608.1 pertaining to roof loads."
This passed on first reading in December 20 of last year. We've likewise had no additional comments. Would entertain an additional public comment, if there is any? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the commission.
Mayor, I'd move that ordinance number 0710430 be approved on second reading.
Second.
Motion is to approve ordinance 07-10430, admitting Chapter 8, Article 1, Division 1 of the Salina Code by Adding Sections 8-15.1 and 2, providing for local amendments to the International Building Code Sections 1607.11.1 and 1608.1 pertaining to roof loads. Will a clerk please call a roll?
Commissioner Larson.
Aye.
Commissioner Peck.
Aye.
Commissioner Purney.
Aye.
Commissioner Vanir.
Aye.
Mayor Jelka.
Aye.
Item 8.3, "First Reading Ordinance Number 0810432, Admitting Article 10 of Chapter 2 of the Salina Code pertaining to the Business Improvement District Design Review Board."
Mr. Andrew.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, commissioners, the city of Salina has had a downtown design review board since it was created by the city commission in 1986. Its mission is to protect and enhance the exterior appearance of properties in the Business Improvement District Number 1, which is now known as the LEED district. And the method by which that is done is that applications for building sign and demolition permits in the Business Improvement District area are referred to the Downtown Design Review Board for review, and a certificate of compatibility must be issued before that building sign or demolition permit can be issued. In 1992, the Board of Advisers, or excuse me, 1995, the Board of Advisors approved funding to create a set of design guidelines for the downtown area. Those were developed, presented to the Design Review Board, and also presented to the Board of Advisors, which approved them, but not formally by resolution. And that's kind of where the item left. They were never referred on to the city commission or attempted to be tied back to the Downtown Design Review Board ordinance or that process. In 2001, the staff assistance to the Downtown Design Review Board was shifted from the SDI staff to the City Development Services Department. And the result of those changes was that the applications are now submitted to the Development Services Department instead of the downtown, Inc. offices. City staff processes the application, sets the hearing dates, makes sure notices are sent out, and information gets to the right individuals. The other differences, the hearings or meetings for that group are held in this room rather than in the SDI offices. Again, that has been taking place since 2001. The 1986 ordinance has not been really touched or looked at since its original adoption. In 2003, there was a working group that looked at the ordinance and identified some weaknesses in the current structure. One of the things that was identified and has been a source of periodic complaints is perceived delays in getting approval of relatively minor changes or projects, adding a sign to an awning or changing out a sign on an awning, or relatively minor work. And one of the recommendations at the time was to set up an administrative procedure whereby those types of things would go to the development services staff and be reviewed as opposed to setting a future hearing date and waiting till the Design Review Board could review it. So one of the things that's been developed for consideration with the amendments to the ordinance is to set up a two-tier process, one for minor projects and one for the more major projects. There's a matrix that's been attached to your information, and basically, that divides up the types of projects that could be applied for in the downtown area, and the minor ones could be reviewed and approved administratively. The major ones would continue to go on to the Design Review Board, just as they currently do. Some of the other changes were to incorporate the term LEED district into the ordinance, a slight expansion of the types of design professionals who could serve on the Design Review Board, a clarification of the officers of the board. Currently, city staff serves as Recording Secretary for Planning Commission, Board of Zoning Appeals and Heritage Commission. We're fulfilling that role with Design Review Board, it's just not stated in the ordinance that way. The other change would be to adopt the design guidelines for use as a reference in evaluating the projects, adopting the matrix and the administrative review process for minor projects. The amendment also spells out an appeals process that if you apply for administrative approval and you're denied, that can be appealed to the full board. Any decision of denial by the Design Review Board can be appealed to the city commission. The other item that was added was a new section clarifying and authorizing the building official to do stop-work orders in the downtown area if work is proceeding without a certificate of compatibility or a building permit. The updated design guidelines were done partially in response to the Puma report and study. One of the responses to that was the city of Salina got out of the Kansas Main Street program, and many of the principles in the 1995 design guidelines... Program, and many of the principles in the 1995 design guidelines were based on Main Street Program principles. So the proposed design guidelines were updated to get away from some of those principles to make them a little broader. The purpose of the design guidelines, they're already cited in the downtown incentive program, that those would be one of the criteria for deciding funding of facade grants. And so if they were adopted, they would be used on all downtown projects and all facade changes regardless of whether funding was applied for. The guidelines should not be confused with creating a downtown historic district. That's not, not the intent, and it's not been the desire of the downtown group to do that. That was one of the items recommended by the Puma report, but the approach that's been taken to date is to look at properties on an individualized basis and allow them to pursue historic designation if they choose. We currently have four historically designated properties in the downtown district. The guidelines are broken down into sections that deal with the type of project that's being proposed, whether it's an addition or alteration or new construction or building rehabilitation, awning signs, lighting, those types of things. So if they were adopted by reference today, they would be used by the Design Review Board for reviewing a certificate of compatibility applications, and also is one of the criteria for funding decisions in the development incentive program. There was a working group of representatives from downtown community that worked on these and revisions to those. They were then sent on to the Downtown Design Review Board and also the Board of Advisors, and they endorsed their use as they were modified and presented to you today. So the potential actions today are to adopt the highlighted amendments to our current Downtown Design Review Board ordinance, adopt the design matrix, and the design guidelines to be incorporated by reference. You could recommend that they, those items be adopted with certain specific revisions, additions, or deletions. You could ask that this item be postponed to allow additional information to be provided, or you could decline to make any changes at this time. I'd be happy to try to address any questions about the ordinance itself, or the design guideline packet, or any background or historical information.
Questions of Mr. Andrew?
The timelines on review process, under a minor review, it has to be looked at within three working days?
There would have to be some response to the applicant within three working days, which is pretty much what we do already for sign permits in other locations.
Okay, then what's the seven calendar days?
Is this under minor review?
Yes, it is. Written notice of the decision shall be provided to the applicant in Building Services Division within seven calendar days after the date of the completed application is filed.
That would be the actual physical certificate of compatibility that would be issued.
Is there a reason why we just don't say we'll have a decision back to you within seven days? And what's the purpose of the three days?
I think the three days was that, so people would know that if you filed an application, it wouldn't sit for seven days waiting for response, that if there were items that were identified...